All right, so here we are with Dana DeFilippi and the Dynamo Player. Take it away Dana.
Thanks Paul. Well, thank you guys all so much for joining me. I really do appreciate you guys inviting me to your Dynamo group. Always a huge fan of talking about Dynamo. A few of you guys are from Smith Group and you guys sure know. She's like, wow, she has to go outside of Smith Group and start her own YouTube because she likes talking about this stuff so much. And you know, that's what I've done. As Paul said, I've started my own YouTube channel, just reached 1,000 subscribers, which I'm super excited about. So Dynamo BIM, thank you so much for the support, Paul in particular. And of course LinkedIn, Twitter recently became computational design co-leer at Smith Group, which essentially just means that I work with a lot of different groups to create workflows that incorporate Dynamo in some way. So how we can leverage automation tools and other, you know, add-ons, et cetera, to make us more efficient as architects, engineers, et cetera. And one of those really great things is Dynamo Player. I know Grasshopper has a player now, which is really, really cool. And Dynamo has a player, which I'm going to talk about today. So I think utilizing these types of interfaces and how we can, you know, really customize our scripts on, you know, making them more versatile, whether that's just more user-friendly within the interface for Dynamo Player for our user. So it's more legible. It's actually intuitive what you're trying to say. And you know, at Smith Group, we're multidisciplinary, right? So it's not just architects, it's not just engineers, it's not just hospitals, it's not just arenas, right? We have all different types of project types with all different types of project scopes. So how can I make different types of scripts more versatile so that regardless of what you might need it for, you can still use it? So one of the scripts that I recently put out within the Dynamo Shorts list on my Dynamo BIM YouTube channel was on placing family instances by room and type. So essentially you specify as the user what room name is and all of those rooms with that name will get a family type that you specify as well. So you can see here that by default, if I just left all of the inputs within Dynamo Player and, you know, essentially the nodes, the way that they come by default within Dynamo, if I leave those all alone, you can see it's kind of illegible, right? When I come in here, it's string. Like what does that mean, right? Like as a non-Dynamo user especially, I didn't know what a string was before I started using Dynamo, right? And then the family types. So what is it exactly that we're looking for? And so what we're going to talk about today is how we can make it a little bit more legible, right? Of course, in this scenario, renaming certain things and customizing your watch nodes so that you can actually tell your user what happened. This is really important to me because it is kind of a mystery when it comes to Dynamo, especially for the users that aren't really familiar with it. You guys using Dynamo Player at all, Paul? Where you're at?
Well, I'm solo, so, but I do use it from time to time. I've actually created a few scripts that I, you know, for clients and distributed them with Player because I didn't know.
Even with your consultants, right? If you're using something that might update your sheet index or, you know, whatever it might be. Sometimes I make those in Dynamo Player and I'll try not to use any custom packages or anything like that because I know somebody outside of my network is going to be using it. But those types of things make it so nice, even just within a team, to be able to say, here's a script that our team can use that works specifically with our title block, right? You just need to specify the sheet group.
Well, recently, the one that I did in Player was because, and I think John Pearson just tweeted something about this, but if you run it in Dynamo, it holds on to the objects.
So nice. It has a memory.
Yeah, but if you do it in Player, you can run the same one over and over again without it trying to do something to the object. Like, okay, I'm done with those objects. Now I want to move on to these other objects. And I found that if you do it in Player, you can, it takes a new selection each time.
Absolutely. You don't have to close out a Dynamo and forget or erase the memory and then open it up again or do the unwiring run and rewiring or, you know, whatever it might be. Yeah, Dynamo Player is really nice with that. So essentially, and if we have some time or if you guys have some questions, I also have an additional, you know, tips and tricks of things that I've kind of worked with inside of Dynamo Player to make it work a little bit, you know, just a little bit smoother, right?
Nice.
Especially with, you know, having some custom inputs, maybe having lists rather than, you know, two options to provide our user, et cetera. So we'll get there. So essentially, right, I've always taught my users, always click on edit inputs. Whenever you're in Dynamo Player, just click on edit inputs. It will tell you if it doesn't have any inputs to update. But this way you know, what is it that I can interface with as a user? And of course, I always joke, it's like, I'm trying to save you time with Dynamo. Takes a little bit of time to load.
You got Dynamo open though.
Oh, I do. But it's, oh, you're right. Thank you for reading my pop-ups for me. No, yeah, I did. I did close it. I did close it. So it was just, it was taking a second to load for me. So you can see here, it, you know, string, family types. I actually did manipulate a watch node, so it's a little bit different than my PowerPoint there. But let's talk a little bit about what we need to do to come in here. And if you want to talk about the creation of this script, I think within the invite of this session, there is the link for the YouTube video that talks about how I actually created this script and the logic behind it, et cetera. So definitely you can check that out. Or if you have any questions, we can, we can talk about it here as well. So definitely open to whatever you guys want to learn about. Now, I've personally created a color scheme, essentially that pink are my inputs. Orange is going to affect Revit in some way, some type of change within my Revit model, whether that's updating, placing, deleting, whatever it might be, something within the Revit model is happening, a transaction is occurring. And then gray would be my reporting. And then everything else usually is just the default green, that when you create a group, it just becomes that green by default. Of course, I do love John Pearson's monocle package and the custom grouping is really, really nice. So you can utilize that as well. So you can see here that I have a string. Now, one of my tips that I'll go through later is that we do have to use code box or not code box, we have to use strings. Code box, if I just kind of double-click in here, you don't even have the option to make an input. So we have to use strings. We can't use code blocks. Tip number one. So one thing that I like to do is in my grouping, I'll usually update the actual group name to be something logical. If nothing else, to tell me as a user or my consultants or whatever it might be, what exactly is happening with this group. I'll just take that, copy it and paste it right into the string. And I'm just basically, not the Windows key, the Ctrl V key, and copying and pasting it right into that node, double-clicking on the node to edit the name on the dark gray part of the node. So I'll do that for my family types as well. Now, one thing that is really nice in the newer versions of Dynamo, I think this is newer in the 2021 version of Revit, 2021 version of Dynamo, which is what Dynamo 1.3 at this point, I think? Or no, 2.1. Regardless, they now tell you that it's renamed.
Have you heard of a lot, there's been a lot of people that have been complaining about that. I think that's awesome.
I think it's great. Why wouldn't you like that? Because before it was totally ambiguous that it was renamed at all. You didn't even know.
I agree, but I've heard some, I've heard some people complain about it.
Interesting. And it even tells you now, when you hover over the rename thing, original node name, family types. I think that's fantastic.
Agreed, agreed.
However, we do have to work sometimes with previous versions and, you know, us as BIM managers, we're usually supporting three versions back at least. So I'll usually come in here and just say node, family types. That way I know specifically that this is the family types node, especially like I said in a previous version. Or maybe even a future version, maybe, maybe this breaks in a future version. So with that being said, another thing that I really like to do is always annotate the custom packages. Any nodes that come from a custom package need to be labeled. And the reason this is, is because it doesn't tell you. If I send this to my consultant and they don't have this package, it's just going to be red. Now luckily, we do have the dependents, which I come into the view and I can show dependence somehow. How do I do it? It doesn't want me to.
Yeah.
Well, regardless, it's an option.
Yeah, it usually pops up if it's missing.
We have monocle. That's the great thing, is that we can actually come in here and do the package usage doggy with the awesome little face. And I actually found out that this changes based off of how many times you come in and you open it. Let's see if I can prove myself accurate on that. The dog, maybe I need to use it. But if I come in here and I annotate my custom nodes, you can see that it actually says custom node clockwork and puts it and append it right on top of there. So it tells me by default where that guy came from. This is something that I really wish even in my users within Smith Group, they got used to doing this right before they saved the script. Just come in here and got used to this kind of being their typical, there we go, it changed. I guess I have to use it. Another really great thing that this has is send package usage to clipboard. And sometimes I'll actually just create a note in here that basically says custom packages in use. You know, and then actually specifically say, I'm using the clockwork package.
Very cool.
I think that really helps, you know, in the description, you know, maybe I have, you know, what version this script would be that is created by me, whatever it might be, you know, I'll usually add this right over there. So awesome, awesome tip, especially when it comes to sharing, which is essentially what we're trying to do with Dynamo Player, right? Is we're trying to share our scripts. So the monocle extension is amazing for that. Definitely really great. So now I'll go ahead and save this and I'll get out of Dynamo Player, right? Because Dynamo, or I'll get out of Dynamo because Dynamo Player will yell at me if I don't. And in Dynamo Player, I'll just refresh this and we'll see that we now have our, our information here in terms of our inputs. I still need to update some of the output information in terms of that watch. And once again, I really, really like having the watch information because when we're sharing that, even if there's an error, even if there's a, you know, warning within that script when it runs, it tells my user something still happened, right? There was still, you know, 16 families placed or whatever it might be. So I'm going to come over here to my reporting area and I'm going to make this an output. In addition to making it an output, I have to rename it. A watch node will not show up in Dynamo Player unless it's renamed. So I could save this script right now as is output. It still won't show up unless I rename this. So I'll say, oh, once again, rather than typing it out manually, I'll just come in here and I'll just say count family instances placed. Maybe count of family instances placed would be a little bit more legible. And maybe I even want to report the family instances themselves, right? I could actually copy this down, make that an output and just say family instances placed. And because this is already set to be an output, right? We're good to go. So I'll save this, close out of it. And in Dynamo Player, I'll reload. And we can go ahead and place a family. It has to be one that's loaded into the project because the script hasn't been created in a way that would load a family, but definitely possible. And I've actually worked with Hassan on one of the YouTube videos to load families. I think the video is called Load Lots of Families with Python. So essentially, yeah, absolutely. And so you essentially just specify the location in which you'd like to load the families from and it can load those.
I haven't been brave enough to, to try the Python yet, so I'm waiting to watch those videos.
I will say, Hassan makes it look really easy. When I try to do it by myself, I usually get really frustrated. So I try to avoid it whenever I don't have him around.
Well, it's nice that you have him on call.
It is really nice. I'm a very lucky girl. He's a, he's an amazing guy. So I'll come in and maybe I'll just place desks and let's see what kind of rooms we have here. Conference, conference seems like it might need a desk. So in all of my conference rooms, I'll place my 60 by 30 desk type. Run this. And it should tell me how many were placed. So four families were placed. And I got the instances. The nice thing about the instances, it actually tells me the ID as well so that I can, you know, look them up by that if I'd like to, right? So here's that family or one of the four, right? That got placed. So you can see here, it's in this specific scenario, placing it in the center of the script or center of the, the room. We could modify the location. So maybe it gets offset somehow or rotated or, you know, whatever it might be. But in this scenario, it's just placing it right in the center. So with that being said, you can see it's super easy for my user to interface with, right? They can come in there, they can, you know, copy different information into the string. They can use the selection dropdown to specify which family they want to use, which hopefully they have a pretty good naming nomenclature, right?
Yeah, I was just going to ask you about that. Have you come up with any, any way to streamline that list? I mean, if you did like a filter by bool mask or something, would that create, it wouldn't really create a dropdown anymore, would it?
No, it wouldn't. And that, yeah, that is a limiting factor unfortunately with input nodes, right? Is that not every input, we can't create inputs. I will say data shapes is really fantastic for that.
Yeah, I got to play with that. I haven't used that yet.
The data shapes package is really wonderful because we can create our own dropdowns. You can essentially put a list of strings into a node and it will create a list for you that can be utilized.
That is my number one wish for the family editor. I mean, number one. Harland has heard me spout about that so many times. I'm like, please give us a list parameter. Number one wish for the family editor. All right, I definitely have to check out data shapes then.
Yeah, yeah, it's really great. Data shapes makes it really wonderful. And one thing that is really great about data shapes as well is that you can include GIFs and, you know, all kinds of really fun things like the package usage doggy, right? So really wonderful way of making your scripts super custom and super useful. And I think that's, that's what it is, is that once people realize that they're able to make their workflows so much more efficient, right? Maybe they have to move that desk where it goes, but they know that every conference room got that desk, right? So, you know, making them more efficient, making them, you know, just that much more effective within Revit. And so once they start to utilize this on a much more practical basis, that hopefully they're starting to understand that, you know, maybe the next step would start to be to get into Dynamo, start to customize scripts specifically for their use, right? I actually had to create a, modify a template that we're trying to push out within Smith Group. And it has essentially a grid for a whole bunch of guide plates, wonderful thing that an office of ours created for their internal use. And they basically gave it to us. I was like, this is awesome. Absolutely. We'll standardize this, right? But one of the things that I had to do is for all of those grids, add a leading zero to all the scope boxes, all the views, all the dependent views, all the schedules, all the sheets, right? And we're talking about, you know, A through X, 0, 1 through 0, 9. So I think that's like almost 2,000 elements that I found with scope boxes, sheet, there's two views, a sheet, you know, like just tons of elements. And I, you know, wrote some Dynamo logic, grabbed all the scope boxes, all the views, all the sheets, grabbed their names, right, filtered them down and added the leading zero, super, super easily to almost 2,000 elements within, you know, 20 minutes of writing Dynamo logic. Whereas just to update those types of things manually, I would have pulled my hair out by the end of that, right? Like your eyes start going back and forth and, oh my goodness.
And you'll forget, you'll forget some, you'll miss some.
Absolutely. Like hit the, hit the escape button rather than the enter. Do you do that sometimes? Like when you're in the type properties or something and you hit a, you've just like edited like 20 different values and you hit escape. Yeah. Rather than enter. Oh my, because whose hand isn't always on the escape key in Revit?
Right, yeah.
Right? All right, anyway, but definitely benefits everybody to start learning some basic things than Dynamo Player. And I think one of those things that we can push people into Dynamo is by getting people in Dynamo Player and using it on a regular basis and saying, okay, yep, it's making a difference in my day-to-day life. I think, I think I should start to learn some nodes and strings.
Yeah.
Sure. So a few tips, a few tips. So I think we have some time, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
About this one, code blocks cannot be used as inputs. So talked about that. Make sure that we're using strings. And of course renaming them because in Dynamo Player, string makes no sense. One of, this is actually a really, really good one. And especially once I, once again, as BIM managers, we're constantly thinking across the versions. In different versions of Revit, there's a different amount of categories, right? Like so in 2019, I think they added the passive travel category, for example. So if it's a user input, use an user input, right? Make this an input and Dynamo Player, people can specify what category that they want to update, right? Maybe you want users to be able to edit the name of sheets, views, scope boxes, et cetera. So they can specify what it is they want to update, right? If it's not, if it's always going to work with rooms, like my script did, right? It's always going to find rooms by their name and place family types, right? Then hardwire it. And the reason that is, is because once again, views in 2021 is there in the dropdown. But because there's a different amount of categories in each version of Revit, views, it doesn't even reach that number in the list within 2019. So in Dynamo Player, your script just won't work or it will work on a category that it's not supposed to, and that's probably worse.
Yeah.
Right?
Right. It just grabs whatever.
But it works on structural columns or something.
Right.
That's bad news. So.
I would think they should, that's been a known problem for a while. I would think they should be working on some solution for that. Because, you know, dropdown lists are nice. They're convenient, you know, but.
Based off an enumeration, because it's not every dropdown list, right? Element types isn't the same. It's not based off an enumeration. So, yeah, it's primarily.
I want it fixed. Can you get on that? Yeah.
I know. And I can never remember the design code to, to write out the category by name.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's above my pay grade.
Totally. Yeah, I can't.
Yeah.
All right. Once again, we have to rename the watch node in addition to making an output, right? We talked about that. So and you can come in here, you can make it an output, it still won't show up. You have to make sure you rename it. And so we rename it. Once again, I love that it says renamed. And then it says is output, so it will show up over here. And you can see now my, my example is still in my Dynamo script. All right. I've actually had a conversation with the Dynamo group about this because this drives me crazy. For whatever reason, you can't add a line break to a name, to a node name. So it all has to exist on one line, which just drives me crazy. However, you can copy line breaks.
Really?
So the group name can have line breaks. I can type, enter and break the line. So if I'd copy that into the node name, it's way more legible within Dynamo Player, right? Rather than like breaking it with parentheses or like semicolons or something like that, which is like, it's just not as intuitive, right? Yeah. Nobody wants to see that. So definitely makes it a lot more legible, a lot more user-friendly in my opinion. Boolean to give users an option, right? Do you want to crop it? Do you not want to crop it? True, false, right? Maybe you want to uncrop it. There was this weird thing with keynotes. Did you see that in like 2018 or something like that? Where the annotation crop would, like your keynotes would disappear, but you could turn on and off the annotation crop and they would reappear. We had the hugest issues at Smith Group with this. And I think it was, something had to do with the upgrade process, with the annotation text and different things like that. I couldn't even tell you exactly what the source is. So we created a script essentially that would update the annotation crop for all views, right? It would just uncrop them, recrop them and your keynotes would reappear everywhere, rather than once again going view by view. So this was a really nice script.
Have you found any way to change, whether it says true or false there? Is it, that's hard, that's hardwired, right?
Yeah, that's hardwired. So sometimes I will, you know, in the actual group name, right? I'll do, you know, crop view, true equals yes, false equals no, or like, you know, whatever it might be in terms of the yes, no consideration, but with a broken line. So it's still super legible. And then copy the group name into the, the name of the node, right? So that's how it shows up in Dynamo Player. So.
Very, yeah, very cool.
We can also give users an option, like do you, like you can see here, that's exactly what I did, right? True equals areas, false equals rooms. So, you know, do you, do you want an option? Are we updating our areas or updating our rooms, right? So in this case, I'm using a conditional statement. That's really doing all the work for me. And it's going to grab either the areas or the rooms.
Yeah, very nice. I, I just started using that trick on a few scripts not too long ago. And I always have to really think hard to remember how to set that up, those, those, because the ifs don't work exactly the same way as they do.
They're dreadful. No, and actually I use a pretty simple, I'll find it over here in the backend, a pretty simple Python script that I can show that is, you know, much more successful in terms of the conditional statement. It works with empty lists. It works with different lengths of lists. I pretty much never use the if node because it's dreadful and it's very, it doesn't work as you expect it to. It's, it's not reliable. This one is really awesome as well. If you like the conditional statement one, use a list. So essentially I'm getting a get item at index. And then using the number or integer slider, my user to specify which the one they want, right? So you can see here that I'm creating a list of lower title case, which I have to write Python for because there's no node for. And then upper, right? So I'm creating the three conditions automatically. And then I'm basically asking my user, which one do you want? Right? Do you, do you want lowercase? Do you want title case? Do you want uppercase? And once again, I'm taking the line breaks into the node name. You can still only see the top line because of the quotations there. But what have you? I'll move this over here.
But in Player, it shows, it shows the three.
In Player, it, it shows just like you had expected to, you know, with the, the broken line like that.
Yeah, so much nicer.
So much nicer. Yeah. It's a little bit hard to read within the Dynamo.
I love that tip. I think that's the favorite thing you showed so far.
Oh, awesome, awesome. But you can see that even the renamed is lowered. So you can just double-click on the node and go in there and see what the full text says. But I always ensure that the group name and the node name are essentially the same, which is, you know.
That's a good tip too. Yeah. Yeah, that's a nice trick.
It just makes it nice and clean, right?
That's the downside of working alone is I tend to get a little sloppy sometimes with my graph documentation. But also I tend to kind of go through the first pass where I just sort of lay it out and try and get it to work. And then I come clean it up if I think I'm going to use it again. But that's not always the best strategy because as they grow and get unwieldy, it's already too late to try and figure out what all that crap over there was. You know, like you should have been documenting it all along. So, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I am actually, I have a little bit of OCD when it comes to organizing my scripts. It takes me a little bit longer to create them, but it saved me so much time later in organization. Because I don't have to, even when somebody from my organization will send me a script, I will go through. I will go through and organize it just to be able to read it, right?
Here, I cleaned it for you.
Exactly. Here's some simple Python for the conditional statement, um, that takes.
Oh, I, even I could write that.
Exactly, exactly, right? And it, it's, you know, pretty basic, it's, it just has a, you know, I usually write what the inputs mean up here. And note, so the tests, the actual conditional statement that you're testing, which are booleans, the list of true, the list of fa- false, and Richard Schmidt at my organization actually wrote this for me, because he's awesome. And so it's, you know, just this. So I'll copy this and paste this, I don't even think you need to import the, the protos. I'll, I'll bring them in just in case, I'll copy this into the chat so that you guys have it. I think that it takes code decently within teams, actually. I think there might be an option in here to, insert.
Yeah.
That, but I'll, I'll figure that out if it doesn't come in here. It came in decently.
Yeah, it's not terrible.
Not terrible. Uh, it's funny, because I actually, um, I have this Dynamo script, which is actually called if, where I've just been playing with different conditional statements, um, and, you know, how they work or don't work. And so there are, I do have some, some designs, uh, script as well, that is somewhat reliable. Um, and, you know, just playing with different things, like working with the level four of lists and trying to get conditional statements to work and things like that, so really just breaking it.
Yeah.
Trying to get these things to work, but.
Well, if, uh, I, I am able to post, uh, files as well. So if there's anything you want to share with us.
Absolutely.
You know, we'd love to have it.
I'll share the, uh, the boolean and the conditional statement Python, because that's a, that's a huge one. I literally never use the if, uh, out of the box. So once again, I mentioned this already, that the watch node is just so great, because especially when a script often generates warnings, right? The run completed with warnings, that's how the script ran, and that will show within Dynamo Player. It will actually say, run completed in green, or run completed with warnings in yellow. Um, so, if that happens frequently with a script, it's a really wonderful thing to display what actually happened. This is something that I've tried to add to all of the scripts that we have within our Dynamo Player, as what we refer to as Smith Group certified scripts, which everybody has access to. It's just make sure that it's telling you, what I refer to as reporting to the user, what is actually happening? Did something happen? Did anything happen? Right? So, just a really, really nice thing, I think, in order to be, to, to happen. One thing in addition is really nice, is if we can actually tell the, and it looks like my video doesn't want to play here, which is sad. Um, we can tell the, the script why it didn't actually work. So you can see here that the user typed it in incorrectly. Let's see if I take it out and I just have it on my presentation, if it will play, because this is supposed to be a video. Just say, no, but you can see here that they have the lowercase c and the rest is everything, right? They accidentally typed it in wrong. And what the output says is, no element updated. Check to ensure the parameter slash the parameter value expe- uh, exists as specified, case specific. Right? So you can go in there and you can say, oh, look, look at that, I accidentally typed that in wrong. And they can correct it and it's gonna run great, rather than me getting the call.
Yeah.
Then, you know, why didn't the script run? Right, and they go in there and type it in the way it's supposed to type, and it ran perfectly, and they're like, ah, it didn't work for me. I don't know why it didn't.
But, but let's be honest, you still get the call, don't you?
I get the call a lot, I get the call a lot. But that's okay, I would much rather them call than not call, right? I hate the suffering and, and silence.
Yeah.
That to me is, is worse than calling every time you run the script, to be honest.
Well, that's why you do what you do.
Exactly, it takes some patience, but that's okay, right? I'd, I'd mu- much rather people be efficient in what they're doing, rather than going through and manually adding the leading zero to two thousand elements.
Oh, yeah.
Right, like, please don't do that.
Yeah.
Don't do that, like, at least before you do it manually, because there's not a smarter way or a more efficient way. Have the conversation with me. Right, I usually try to plant the seed with people of like, if you're about to do something that you hate doing in, in Revit, that like, uh, you are just dreading having to do, then call me, right? Like, don't, don't go into that task, like, ugh, I'm about to spend four hours renaming things in Revit. Like, no, give me a call, right? Like, that's just so much better of a thing to do.
And eventually, they start to gain that intuition on their own of, those are the things that we can probably automate.
Think computationally, that's the best thing that I can ask of someone, to, to start to think that way, to start to, um, you know, ask, is this something that maybe a, a computer, that computationally, we could, uh, find a solution for? So this is that script that I was referring to in terms of the output. You can see that what the script is actually doing is it's just, um, updating a parameter, right? So you basically specify, I want to go from level to floor, right? Uh, maybe all my views or all my sheets, I want to update the drawn by or author, whatever it might be, right? So we're essentially finding and replacing a value, is essentially what's happening. With any category of elements, it's an instance parameter and a string, right? So, you can see that, that actually doesn't take much node power, right? Like, what's actually happening there, that's not much. But the reporting is a little bit more intense. And you can see here that this actually does have the, the, the Python script with the boolean, so I'll share you this with you for sure. And so it basically says.
You've got both there, why do you?
Yeah, I do have both there.
Yeah.
I guess because this one is actually, um, would specifically break, this one wouldn't break. But regardless, um, this one is basically saying, is it null? Right, like, did it report something that was null value? Which essentially would mean that the script didn't run, right? And if it's null, then report this. No element updated, check to ensure that the parameter slash parameter value expects is, uh, exists as expected, right? Uh, specified, sorry. And then, if it's not, then essentially, um, you're going to give me the elements that got updated. Right, so.
Oh, see, that's super interesting, like, duh, of course you could.
Duh, right?
If that way, yeah.
Exactly.
Never even occurred to me, like, I've always just done the watch, just let it dump out what it did, but it's like, a list of objects doesn't tell you anything.
Right.
This is so much better, yeah.
Another thing that you could also do is maybe you put together a string of the element name, right? Like, uh, rather than, you know, element type XYZ with the, um, with the element ID, which means nothing to my user, right? Do an element name and, you know, add the element type with the name and create a list of those elements and feed that out, right? So that it's addition, in addition to the element ID, you're getting the name of that element in the, in the watch. That's a nice one as well.
Yeah, that's really nice. Hmm, lots of really cool things to think about. So, tell me about object is null, I always struggle with this. There's a, i- if it just dumps the list or remove nulls, I forget which one it is. Any, anytime I'm dealing with nulls, I never seem to get satisfactory results. And is it because there's that option to preserve list structure? And you're either not supposed to check that, or you are supposed to check that, or? But somehow, like, it feels like I still end up getting nulls on my list, even though I'm trying to remove them, like.
Also, the list.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yes, so the list dot clean, um, does essentially remove all the null values. So cleans data of null values and empty lists. However, if you do not put a boolean on here with a false to preserve indices, it will essentially just report the same list with the nulls in it.
Exactly.
Preserving the indices, so it's kind of a little bit of an oxymoron.
Which, shit, doesn't seem like.
Like redundant.
Okay, so you always need to put a boolean there.
So you need to put a boolean there that basically says, no, don't preserve the indices. However, sometimes we actually need to preserve indices, right? Because we're like, giving a list that's organized in a specific way that we need downstream, organized in that specific way. So sometimes, um, uh, actually, I think Gavin, the Ozzy Bim guru, taught me a little trick that's, uh, replace by condition. So, replace by condition, essentially, you can take the list, right? So a lot of times, views or place will report nulls. And the reason that is, is because of the project browser. So then, the view of project browser gets reported as null a lot of times, especially when you're getting the name of it and other things.
I saw that in your most recent video, I didn't realize project browser was a view in Dynamo. I knew about, I knew about view templates, but I didn't know about the browser, so, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So if you feed in that list, um, then you can say, replace with whatever. A lot of the time, it will actually be a boolean that you're replacing it with, like, false or what have you. Um, because a lot of time, I'll be asking it, like, are you a view template, right? Like I did with the, with the video.
Yeah.
Are, are my views a view template? Let's just go ahead and do it, right? We have a few minutes here. So views, I'm just gonna breeze this guy and then turn it to automatics that we can work with this guy dynamically. And then we'll do the category by name, you can see, I, I just do this like automatically, like as a habit. I don't even use the category dropdown anymore.
Yeah.
Then all elements of category.
It's gonna make you say the whole thing.
I know, and then if you come in here and you say, are you a view template? I get a null for my project browser. But these are trues and falses, so essentially.
That's why it's in yellow, because of that one null.
Exactly, so you could do, like I did in my video, uh, list dot clean, right? Right here, and you could just say, see, it's, if you don't do the boolean with false, it just says, okay, well, you don't want to mess up your list indexing, so.
So I'm gonna leave.
We're just gonna give you the list as it is, right? So in that case, if you, you would, you would need to come in here and you, not overwrite the name, but copy that guy. You would actually need to say, false, don't preserve the indices. And now eighteen is no longer a null, right? It actually removes that from my list. So if I now ask these guys, I don't get a warning, right?
But of course, everything beyond eighteen is now a different index.
Exactly, exactly. So if I was calling specifically for an index number, or I needed to preserve that list structure for whatever reason, maybe I've sorted the list, maybe I've grouped the list, whatever it might be. So I need to actually keep, uh, you know, eighteen and below as they are. What I'll do is I'll just say, okay, replace anything that is null. Oh, is null. And that's my condition, and the condition actually needs to be a function, so you don't wire it. It's a little bit of a, of a confusing.
I still get confused by that, but yeah, I'm, I'm still hanging on, go ahead.
Okay, and then essentially, you say, just replace it with true, because right now, I don't want the view templates. If you did want the view templates, then you've replaced it with false, because you're essentially gonna break the condition that you want, right? Do you want your view templates, or do you not want your view templates? What is it in your mask that you want to use there?
I gotcha, okay.
So in this case, if I wanted to use my views, then I'm gonna say, is view template? Yes, anything that's null, be a view template. And that way, my list of, um, views is clean, right? I don't get that null, right? Did I break it? Oh yeah, it's, that's in my true. So, my view templates now get reported with that null value, right? And it's still in the same, um, you know, organization that it was before. They, they still follow the same, they're not in the same index, but they still have the same organization. But if I look at, you know, throw in a watch node here, my views, I don't have any null values. They're all nice and clean and et cetera. So this is a really very common thing that I've been using lately, this replace by condition.
Yeah, that's really cool, I like that.
The boolean, yep. So, and if you did need a clean list of view templates, then you would just change the condition and work with the false situation, right? So you're saying, no, be a view, because I want to be, I want to work with my view templates. And so in this case, now you get a clean list of view templates.
Outstanding.
This is a nice one too.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, this is very confusing, that, it should just default to false.
Yeah.
Like, rather than defaulting as true.
Well, so I'm, I, I've gotten at least half a dozen, uh, cool things. Uh, I don't see any questions in the chat, so that's why I've been monopolizing the con- conversation here. But if anybody has a question for Dana, or, I don't know, Dana, did I derail you? Was there something you were still?
No, no, I think actually that was my last tip.
Oh, look at that, see, perfect timing.
Yeah, that's, that's the end of the slide there, so. We even walked through the.
Yeah.
Why a script didn't run and providing that as an output, right?
Yeah. Um, well, okay, so, and we're a small enough group here that if anybody has a question, you can just unmute yourself and ask away, uh, you don't have to type it, um, so anyone? I see somebody unmuting. Well, I see you trying to speak, uh, one, two, two, four, I won't read the rest, but, uh, I'm not hearing anything. So maybe you do have to type. Nope, we're not hearing you.
I'd also love to know if any of you guys use Dynamo Player within, uh, your organization or within, you know, your teams, your project teams. Um, I will sometimes, within a project team, you create a project folder specific for Dynamo scripts that are, you know, maybe it works specifically, like I was mentioning before, with their title block, right? Um, so it doesn't necessarily have to be something that you use only in a giant organization like Smith Group. Um, right, you can, you can call, you know, you as a, as a one guy shop, you know, working with outside consultants or what have you. Or maybe you just want to be able to use your scripts the way you were talking about with John.
Yeah.
Um, and, and, you know, erase the memory every time you hit run and not, not have that, uh, you know, situation where you have any close Dynamo.
I showed you some of my scripts a few weeks ago, and you may recall how difficult it was for me to, uh, to find the right one. So I guess that's my question for you. What, what tips do you have for better ways to manage this pile of scripts that you accumulate? Especially when you're iterating versions of them, you know?
That's a very good question, that's a very good question. I will say that there is a backup folder for Dynamo that is essential to know where it is. And if you just Google it, it's pretty easy to find, it's like in your, um, your Dynamo standard location, like where your two point O folders and all that good stuff is. Um, so that actually does remember your scripts. So if you accidentally delete something out of the folder or something like that, um, you might be able to find it there. I, it has definitely saved me in the past. The, the other tip that I can suggest is, when you're naming things, whether it's folders or Dynamo scripts specifically, which Dynamo Player can't see folders. So this is really important, and this is why I've kind of picked up this nomenclature, is I always think about what it is that I'm updating. That's gonna be the first word of my script, what's changing, right? Um, so, you know, maybe it's element types, and that seems really ambiguous, but, you know, that's what it's updating, or family instances, like that's what's being created. Uh, that's what's, that's what I'm gonna put first, so sheets, you know, or views. You know, whatever it is that's actually being impacted by that script, rooms, whatever it might be. That's the first word, and then sometimes I'll do an underscore and then explain what's happening, right? Sheets underscore, find and replace by name, right?
Uh, do you see the chat there? We do have a question there.
Is it possible to use Dynamo Player to install third-party packages? It is, um, if you have a location in which they live, um, so let's just say that maybe you have them on a network drive. You can actually use Dynamo to copy them down to your C drive location or to your, your standard Dynamo location. That's a pretty common thing that I've done in the past, um, when we had them on a shared location. Um, we actually, within Smith Group, have an application that copies them from a shared location down to those standard locations by default. Um, so every time you close out a Revit, those files are getting updated in the backend. So that's really nice, but that is definitely something that that you could do is just essentially have one person manage the packages, what, you know, regardless of where they're getting them. Because sometimes you don't get them all from the package manager. There's, you know, some of them that actually.
What is it? Lunchbox or?
Yep. Yeah. Whereas that you have to go, I forget the site even that you have to go.
Yeah.
Regardless.
Yeah.
Proving ground, exactly. So go and grab them, get one person to maintain the list. And then you have a Dynamo script and I can find this and share it. But essentially, it just you navigate to a folder location and it copies the the contents of that folder to a folder that you specify. So your Dynamo standard location, or you could have it update to all of the Dynamo standard locations because it varies per Dynamo. Right? Depending on which Dynamo you're working with, which version, so Dynamo 2.1, et cetera. They all have different folders that they look at.
Yeah. That's always a challenge to all the different versions.
Yep.
I forget sometimes when I have to go back to an older version of Revit and then I fire up Dynamo and I'm like, oh, wait, it's different.
Yeah, exactly. Like, where did my packages go or where my my Dynamo? Yeah, exactly. So that would actually be a really nice script to have it just pull from one source folder and copy it to all your Dynamo locations. In that way, one person is managing it. And then a Dynamo script can be maintained. And that, you know, it's a very, very simple script, which wouldn't require any Dynamo packages. It's literally just copying a folder to another folder. Yeah, no, absolutely. The same package is definitely an issue.
Exactly.
So.
Cool.
Yeah.
Anyone else have a question for us or comment or topic of discussion? Just want to say hello. All right. Well, I mean, we're at the hour, Dana. I don't know. It's up to you. I mean, I think we've.
I can I can hang out if you want to chat at all. But if you want to stop the recording for the sake of having a complete recording or what have you.
I think we've we've definitely gotten a lot of great stuff. Thank you so much. I really
Absolutely.
Appreciated it. And I'm sure the group did as well. And it'll live on in the recording. I'll let you know where we're sharing it and you can maybe link to it in your channel as well.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, let me go ahead and stop the recording. All right, there we go.